Welcome back to Athens City Council. Again, it's Monday, January 23rd, 2011. City Council has already completed its special session and had a short executive session where we did discuss some pending litigation before the city. And we're going to take a very slight change from our committee agenda. We're going to first jump to the Transportation Committee to discuss one miscellaneous item, and then we will jump back to the Environmental Committee and take all the committees in the order of the agenda. So first, Transportation Committee Chair Chris Neisler.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city has an opportunity to apply for a scrap tire grant, and that's through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The deadline is fast approaching for that. It would be February 4th. And what we would need is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to apply for this grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Very briefly, just as background about this, there are four potential Ohio Department of Natural Resources grants. One works with civil engineering, one works with manufacturing tires, one works with tire amnesty, where you can drop off or dispose of tires, and another one works with research and development. What's a unique opportunity about this program is that the city would be coordinating their grant application to the Department of Natural Resources. And we would be applying for a paint project. This would be a paint binder, and what that does is holds the asphalt together and would help us do our road repairs. We would be applying for a $75,000 grant, and we could use our money in our street rehab fund as the match for this. So this grant opportunity, in a sense, extends our capability to do street repairs, street rehabilitation, and then it coordinates our particular part of the grant with a grant, two other components that are being submitted by two other agencies in the Athens area. One is the Athens City County Health Department, and they're applying for a grant under the same program for tire amnesty. And then Athens Rural Action is applying for a grant under the same program, and that would be to support local businesses to manufacture scrap tire projects. So the three will coordinate all at the same time. The purpose in our bringing this item, transportation item, up out of order tonight or in first order of discussion is that because the grant application is due on February 4th, we're requesting a special session of council to occur before February 4th, and so it might be next Monday night.
That's one of the possibilities, and the reason when Chris came to me and said, "How can we handle this?", it was too late to get it on a special session agenda. And you cannot amend a special session agenda to add an item like this that would have been nice to go ahead and suspend on and pass. Now, if it's not council's pleasure to, I hope we can find a way that we do not leave $75,000 on the table for something that I think all of us would like to do. It's something that'd be hard to pass up. It doesn't have to be next week. It can be a one-item agenda. If there's a time that we can get six of seven council members together over lunch one day yet this week, or whenever, to do this, it can be done. Now, we've done that kind of thing in the past. So discussion on when might be a time, or are you interested in having this to go after this grant? Member Butler.
Thank you. I just want to express my support for this endeavor. It seems like a nice opportunity to combine efforts since there's many entities involved with this process. It's not so self-serving, but it's working with a number of agencies. So I do offer my support, and you would be willing to do what I can to flex my schedule to be available for a vote.
And the one other item I would like to point out, Chris pointed out that we would be using funds from our street rehab fund for the match. What is a match?
It would be a dollar-for-dollar.
Dollar-for-dollar.
Match.
We do have $1,295,000 in the unappropriated column of our street rehab fund, so the funds are certainly there.
Yeah, but it might be.
Member Bean.
No, I just, you've got the bridge in there, and I hope the Franklin Grosvenor slip. And if this interferes with that, I'm going to be mad.
As I understand, our allocation from the street rehab fund is about $250,000 a year.
And we have a big expenditure from the upcoming street rehab, or bridge rehab.
But I understand, I hear you.
Can you speak to that? And I know you're being blindsided, but.
So are we.
So is everybody, but.
The estimate we have on Grosvenor slip is $300,000. Yes, that's something we'd like to fund, but how we've been able to locate any funds to assist us in that never happened.
What about the bridge? How much is that?
Carriage bridge? With the carriage, this one gets a little complicated, and I know Chris knows about this. By redoing the carriage bridge, we get credit for the bridge program that's going towards our Oxbow match. I know that sounds odd, but that's how they view that. You get your, but you have to do that in-house, and then that's applied towards our match on the Oxbow.
And I think that demonstrates how important it is to have somebody who's really highly qualified doing things like that. There's no question in my mind. But the fact is that we had a list of things in the street rehab fund that we said we were going to do, and this was not on it. And I'm not opposed to it, but I do think the money has been promised to certain things.
Well, again, you know.
I passed out the slips. And so, I mean, I did it.
We feel that by merging these three applications into one and talking about each one and what have you, we'd have a greater chance of getting it all funded here for Athens County.
And how many, yeah, for Athens County? Because that's exactly the question I was going to ask you next. Exactly how many tires did we pick up at our last, not very many.
Not very many. But again, we charge them, and they have an amnesty program here in the.
Well, you know, and that's, but the point I'm trying to make is that we have limited resources, and this will be largely serving the county, because that's where the tires are.
Our portion would directly be serving the city of Athens. I was wondering about the paint. I have it listed as a scrap tire modified asphalt.
Right. It's a binder that will be used in our asphalt for street rehab. And it would be specifically for the street. And I think what we could do is clarify from Mr. Stone whether, I hear your question, would this jeopardize in any way our completing the Grosvenor?
Not only that, all of them. I mean, you know, it's a total way of things to do.
I know, as of this afternoon, I can verify for you that the Carriage Hill Bridge will still be accomplished. That needs to be accomplished this year, and there is money in that. And the reason it needs to be accomplished this year, so as Service Safety Director Paula Horean Mosley was saying, that needs to be coordinated with the Oxbow Bridge. What the Department of Transportation is doing is encouraging, the reason they'll allow that cost share is they're encouraging bridge rehab across the city. So Carriage Hill, yes, will definitely happen, but it sounds like we need to clarify, can Grosvenor, the Grosvenor slip still happen if we're allocating these monies?
Let's go back and think about it differently. If we are using money, this now, to make a new form of asphalt, then when, it just come out of the street fund? I mean, it seems like doing things at the last minute like this is not the most profitable way to do it, but I have to say, I'm a little hot around the edges because it seemed to me that we had a plan, and now all of a sudden, everything goes back a step, and we have.
Well, I think of the $250,000 we spent on street rehab during the year, this is just extending it. I don't see it as supplanting other new projects.
No, it's the fund it's coming from that's making me hot around the edges.
Okay. So I need to clarify that for us. Councilmember Fall.
So this is a new type of asphalt. Theoretically, it's part of a research. Are they looking at it as a research, and there's people?
This is, I don't believe this is part of a research.
So they're trying to get people to use this new binder asphalt? Is that part of it?
And I don't know that it's the research and development portion.
It's a standard practice.
I think it's a, I think it's already a proven standard practice.
So what it's doing is wherever we're using normal asphalt, we would substitute this for it. And so we would be spending that money to do the asphalting anyway, so this is giving us $75,000 to use this type of new material. Is that kind of?
That's what I think is happening, yes.
So I mean, it's like, it is extending it, it's not replacing any, we're just using their material and some money to do the asphalting we would normally do?
Right.
Is that what I'm.
I believe that's true.
So it shouldn't affect other projects if we do $75,000 worth of asphalting, which theoretically would include the. Well, the thing is, is that the decks of the bridge, Carriage Hill Bridge, has to be asphalted and stuff, too. That would probably be part of it. And it would have to be part of it, too, because that's being asphalted.
I mean, it's really not Andy's position to have to choose where it comes from.
I don't think where it has to necessarily replace other projects, because other projects involve some form of asphalt at some point, as all street projects do.
Except when they're concrete.
Any other questions or comments on this one? In a while.
Again, part of this thing is if we extend our ability to buy asphalt. And actually, I look at this as trying to dovetail with our solid waste, zero waste concept for the city in terms of finding uses for the waste stream. So therefore, I don't see any, you know, problem with this. If you look at the other entities, they're looking at this as a solid waste issue more than a road issue. The money may come out of the streets, but it could also come out of our solid waste fund, our garbage fund, too. Or blend of it, depending on what happens down the road.
But you have to demonstrate to me that we are, in fact, putting tires in the dump, and we aren't. And we don't have very many tires to dispose of in the city. It's mostly a county problem. And I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just opposed to it supplanting things that we already have in place that would benefit the city. That's all I'm saying.
Sure.
They all understand.
Yes, I understand, too. And again, I'm aware of the fact that we charge for the tires being returned to us, and therefore, we don't get a lot. I know we spent quite a bit of money cleaning up the Boyd Ridge a couple of years ago. We still have some tires up there. I can show you a picture of one growing, a tree growing through the middle of it.
If you put tires in the ground on the top, it's axiomatic.
Well, I guess really, what is council's pleasure, do you wish to make?
I'd say Monday, yeah. I'm okay with that.
Next Monday. We would need to meet Monday night, the fifth Monday.
It's too bad they didn't get organized. We could have done it today. I mean, this is.
I support.
I apologize for that, but Debbie made the call, and I support and agree with.
We have, as you say, three different entities who are involved in this, so therefore, coordination's a little bit more difficult.
I do have a question.
It's seven?
Yeah. Seven, congratulations. And maybe we'll hear about this, but, and I know one of Rural Action's goals is local economic development, so I'm curious as to where the tires will be processed and.
Oh, that's a good question.
If there would be any local economic benefit to this project. It sounds like there may be.
How about pollution, too? Yeah, I mean, it's got to be, and that's as big a problem as anything else, hazardous material.
So maybe we'll hear a little more next Monday.
I can find out some additional details. I do know that Rural Action plans to manufacture in some way the scrap tires, so.
Well, more for us, though, where they're going to convert. Yeah, I mean, Rural Action can do what it does, but my question would be where they're going to heat it up and do this new binding process. Can we rent the street as they're doing it? Okay, I'll find that out, too. I mean, it does seem important because of.
May or wild seems to have a glimmer of.
I thought, we had a discussion on the staff meeting, wasn't it, this past Monday?
Probably the counter day?
No, it wasn't today, it was must've been the last time, last Monday. It's been a glad change, you know, last Monday was a busy day. The way I understood this, actually, was that really, it's almost like a trade-in of tires. It's like you're recycling your bottles, deposits, you put the tires in, you get some kind of solvent back. It's like a 1% mix of actual tire into the asphalt, so it's not a high percentage of mix, it's just an addition to the binder that they usually put into asphalt. It's a substitution of one petroleum product with another. Because I had questions at that, I seem to recall many years ago, a literature about some roads in Seattle just trying to smoke because they put so much steel in there, it started to oxidize and take off. And that was my first question. Were we talking about something?
Punch the tires? Punch the tires?
Yeah. So that was my first question, what are we talking about here? And really, what he's talking about is a substitution of binder, one for one, and the idea is that we don't, we're not going to take our tires, ship them out someplace and come back. We're going to like, you know, it's like, you don't put your beer bottle in, you know, you're on that deposit bottle in and get the same bottle right there. It's a switch out, to where I understand it.
So in other words, we're sending our tires, whatever tires we collect, smaller numbers they are, somewhere else?
Yes. And then they'll be.
Now, I'm really concerned about taking the money.
Really, why?
Well, I mean, because there's no demonstrative need that I see that's as important as some of the other needs we've already identified.
Again, we're still going to be buying asphalt. It doesn't matter where, what kind of binder gets put in there.
Right. Asphalt, and we don't get a price break on it, right? No.
Well, listen, if it's 50 cents on a hundred dollars, isn't that a price break?
Is that, well, you didn't mention.
It's a one-to-one, right?
Yes.
Every dollar we put in, we get a dollar.
The dollar comes from another entity?
Yes. It's a grant.
It's a grant.
That's the whole concept.
And some of those dollars are a match, too, so then we're paying ourselves. That's cool.
Well, yeah, I guess. Are you talking about the other entity that's throwing it in?
I don't know. I know.
I'm just saying, you're spending out the dollars.
We spend the money to get a little bit back.
But you're always spending money.
Yeah.
I know.
It sounds like council's willing to have a special session to discuss this and possibly debate and pass, possibly not, but at least we're going to have an opportunity to hear more about it. And Member Gosny, I would like to thank you for allowing us to go out in session and stepping on your committee. And with that, let's go back to the Environmental Committee, committee chair, Alana Gossner.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a couple items on the agenda for the Environment Committee. The very first one, and thanks for waiting patiently, is a presentation from the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District. Kathy Bobo is here with us, as well as, I believe, Harold Don, and they come mostly here to give a report on the activities of the Soil and Water Conservation District, which is a county organization that exists in counties across the state, and they do a variety of activities and receive some funding from the city of Athens. I believe it was $12,000 last year, if I remember correctly. So, take it away.
Did you get it? We did.
We all did, yeah.
Well, I will keep this as brief as I can. We'll go through this really quick here. As Alana said, my name's Kathy Bobo, and I'm with the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District, and was asked to come tonight to kind of give you an update on what we've been doing and how we've, and the projects that we've worked with the city of Athens on. And it kind of goes back to 1991, when we, when there was a memorandum of understanding between the city of Athens and our office to provide technical services to the land owners and tenants. And part of that is the ordinance deals with trying to prevent flooding, invasion, stormwater issues, flood control, and sedimentation, all things that we've been doing in our office for a number of years now. So some of the services that we've provided are that are outlined in the memorandum of understanding, and you guys actually have a copy of that in your packet. Talks about landowner and potential landowners, home site investigations. We also do this for developers and contractors. We can do plan reviews, either for subdivisions or for stormwater management. And I believe that we did one, that we participated in a plan review, I think, for the land about. I know that something was submitted to our office. We also have individuals in Columbus with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Soil and Water that can provide technical assistance to you through our office as well. So I believe there was a stormwater management specialist that helped look over one of those plans. And then also for erosion control plan reviews. Another thing, so the educational program, there's the Homebuyers/Landowners Guide. You guys should all have a copy of that. I think we talked about that a little bit last year, but that's where you should be in your packet. And those are really good tools for potential homebuyers or builders, that you know, that types of offices are available and what those services, what each of the services that they provide to them to help them with, you know, building a home or buying property or building, you know, property here in Athens County. And then also erosion, stormwater management training to city employees if needed. We've done that in the past, and are open to doing that again if that's necessary. Some of the other is technical assistance that we provide to just Athens County, because as Alana said, we are Athens County Soil and Water, so we do, you know, service landowners outside of the city limits. Also, in the same fashion, through survey evaluations, home site evaluations, drainage-invasion control evaluations, and slips, and of course, the agriculture assistance that we provide, which is quite a large project that we do. And I'm going to go into the areas in detail, because you do have an annual plan in your packet that outlines all these, all the services that we've done. But one thing I wanted to note was the educational assistance that we can provide. Our education coordinator, Teresa Caldwell, provided 149 education programs to about 5,300 participants last year. And that's to, you know, through workshops or through school programs, you know, there's a multitude of things that she's added. At least, everything is listed in that annual report. I threw this in real quick, because through part of our outreach, we do provide a $500 scholarship to any student, high school student or senior, and the Athens City County schools that want to pursue a career in natural resources or agriculture. And there is a deadline coming up for that, and I believe that's March 25th. And I wanted to throw that in, so if anybody's watching, and wants to apply, that they can do that through our office. And also, we do a forestry camp scholarship, and that deadline's coming up, too. So if anybody's interested in either of those, they need to contact us. The other thing, through service programs, I wanted to throw that we are doing our annual tree sale, and that's also available to, yes, to Athens city and county residents, and there are other things in your packet, if anybody, you know, that's for everybody. So I just wanted to throw that in to let people know that that is a service that we can provide to them. And the other thing is, we're updating our county projects, if anyone is interested. We are in the process of doing that, and we're doing that locally, using the GIS coordinator for the county, who's providing, putting together maps for us, and we're going to do the planting locally. So everything's done here in the county, we're not phoning that out to an outside agency. So they're hoping to help their courses there. And probably the main program that we worked with the city on this year was the development of rain gardens. And this, I wanted to just give credit to the local artist that handled this graphic for us, which. I'm sure you all are. She actually did the rain garden graphic, and then we incorporated that into our educational brochure that will be placed in the community center and at the code office. That was one of the grant requirements that we had. Just real quick, I wanted to mention that Athens County found its source, which is called Southeastern Ohio Rain Gardens Group, in July of 2010. But we've been talking about doing rain gardens since January of last year. I think we mentioned it briefly then, but just getting started. We had Stephanie Sutter from Franklin Soil and Water came down, we did a presentation to our group. They have a wonderful rain garden program up there. It's called Corgi, Central Ohio Rain Gardens Initiative. And we're kind of trying to model some of the activities that we'll do here locally for our residents after what they've done in Franklin County. They have a wonderful website, if anybody's interested in going on there and looking. They have a really good website. So most of you probably know what rain gardens are. Okay, so some of the benefits of them are listed here, and filtering stormwater on off, the flood owners, the strains, recharging our groundwater supply, helping reduce problems associated with flooding and drainage, reducing erosion with deep root systems of native plants, providing habitat and food supply for wildlife, and enhancing the beauty of yards and gardens. Everything that we've been trying to do, and we've talked about, we can do in these rain gardens. So we worked with the city to put together a grant to Ohio EPA, an amount of $7,700, through EPA's Surface Water Improvement Fund, and the grant was titled Athens Urban Rain Garden Grants. And basically, what that was, was to install three demonstration rain gardens within the city of Athens, two at the code, or two at the community center, and one is at the code office. And it's estimated that we've collected about 63 gallons of storm water in those rain gardens to date.
63,000 gallons?
But I said 63,000 gallons. I said 63 gallons. Oops, that would be a mess up, doesn't it? 63,000 gallons of storm water collected to date that we've kept out of the storm systems and we've put that back into the groundwater. So real quickly, I just want to go through some of the sites. If you haven't seen one, this is at the back of the community center. And what we did here was we disconnected one of the downspouts and actually took a third of the river and diverted that into the rain garden. And this is a picture of, you know, local partner, individuals. Can you see Paul in there? Paul even came up. We did this in September, beginning of September, and it was so hot, they really envisaged it to do this. But we had a lot of fun, we learned a lot. There was ladies there from the Athens Master Gardeners Group, some of our staff, and Paul was even there helping install some of the native plants into the garden stuff. And this is kind of what it looks like after the fact. And you notice the rock line channel that comes down from the, the owners there, that's where the water from the downspout's coming in. The second one at the, at the community center is on the back side, and you're probably, they're actually putting it under that lighter area there is in the front part of the picture. You probably notice it or recognize it, because that's where your salad pans are out there in the parking lot. So if you're looking down, that's where the rain garden went. And that's kind of a picture after the plant was put in. And of course, the third one is at the code office, which is right along Kern Drive. It's a lot smaller, but again, we took the downspout, and it really wasn't going under anything at the time, so we kind, it was just kind of running straight into the ground. It was only about a foot from the building, so we kind of captured that, extended it out through a rock line channel, getting it away from the foundation, and linking it out into the rain garden itself. And those are the pictures of the rain gardens. We cut the different views there at the code office. Some upcoming events that we want to do to finish up the, our grant itself is we want to sponsor a rain barrel workshop. None of this stuff is really new. You guys are probably already doing it, but for some people that want some assistance or want some help in putting some of these together, we want to try and provide that for them. We want to put together a rain barrel workshop. We also need to sponsor a rain garden awareness tour, and I think they're going to coincide that with the Athens Community Garden Tour that very same day. And then also, a couple weeks later, sponsor a rain garden workshop where we can help people with design and installation information. But we'd also like to work with the city of Athens, maybe some other projects with the rain gardens. I think this is a great opportunity to maybe incorporate some of these into, not just on public property, but maybe on private property as well. I know we've had some people interested calling our office, wanting to know more about them and how they can put them on their property. So maybe we can, you know, sit down, take a look at putting something in place where we can maybe look for grant plans or something to help offset some of those costs to the landowner. Might even be able to incorporate it into some of your stormwater management plans that you are, be working on through Ohio EPA. It could be a good educational component of that plan. So we're open to suggestions, there's some things we'd like to work with you on.
Thank you. And do any councilmembers have questions for Kathy? No? Go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm not quite sure if this is the proper time to ask, or I didn't know if there was any other city buildings that are on the slate for possible rain garden locations, or if it was something else that was being considered for the future.
The grant itself specified those three locations. The grant itself specified those three locations.
I couldn't recall.
Yeah, I think we, those are the ones, and I think we picked those because they were pretty visible. You know, that's, community center has a lot of people in and out of it, obviously, and the code office, the location I think we picked there was hope that some of the developers, you know, people going in for permits could see those and think, you know, just kind of have that as a visual there to see if there was any questions. I'm not opposed to looking at other city sites, if you guys knew of any, we could also work toward that as well.
And it really seems like with, with probably mandate for us to develop a stormwater management plan in the near future, that hopefully we'll be able to integrate this technique as part of that.
That would be really nice.
Find a way to account for it and make it fit.
You know, one of the things we talked about earlier was, you know, East State Street, and we kind of looked at the East State Street area too, with community, just, community center would just kind of fit in there. With the flooding issues that they have there, that might be a good place to start in looking at some alternatives to stormwater management. And I think rain gardens would fit in very nicely there. Some of the other, just corgi, the Franklin County, I know they've done surveys to see if people are interested. You know, they've done a lot of things that would fit in our situation here that we might look into and see if they're interested in doing that.
And we focused on rain gardens here, but the home site evaluations that you provide within the city are free of charge to a property owner?
They are, yes.
And that's in exchange for our partial funding of your agency? Can you tell us a little about your, the funding of your agency? I know you have a variety of sources of funding.
We, we have three funding sources right now. The Athens County Commissioners fund us out of their general fund, and then we have the city of Athens. And then that money is matched through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Soil and Water. And depending upon, there's a fee str, or there's a, I want to say, it's a, it's a formula, thank you, the formula, based on what kind of funds they have at that time. They, we used to have a separate line item that was for state match dollars, but, and that came out of, I think, general revenue, and so since that's drying up, we've had to look for different sources of funding for state match dollars. And some of them are through fee-based programs through EPA in different places. So based on the kind of, how much money they have right then, it depends on what percentage that is matched, what your guys' money is matched at. We used, I mean, our goal is to do one-to-one, we've been as high, in the past, we've been as high as in the 90s, but with things the way they are right now, it's not that, I mean, it's much lower. We're looking at possibly in the 50s, 50% range, so.
Well, I have to be honest, with the city's budget and the way it is and the uncertainty that we have, of course, there's no guarantee that we can continue to find funding, full funding for this. But we will, we'll have that discussion certainly as we get close to having a contract that we need to renew and allocating funds for.
Okay. Sure.
I will point out the service for soil evaluations, slip-on evaluations in the city and outside the city is free, but it's also the first gatekeeper, so if there is a slip-on area, they're the first ones, just think of the general condition, or then subsequent, if you, if it is troublesome, I'll let you know.
Take the next step.
Then you bring in the heavy guns or the expensive part. So this is an inexpensive way to evaluate property within a city in terms of slip-on construction or even any just type of renovation.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much for coming to present to us tonight.
Sure, thank you.
All right, the next item on my agenda is something I'm just going to reintroduce briefly so that I can start moving with it this year. It's something we talked about last year, and that is like green building policy or ordinance within the city that would affect city-funded construction projects. And basically, what I'm putting together is a draft ordinance that would establish lead, leadership in, I think it's energy, leadership in energy and environmental design, standards for new city construction over a certain size. This is, you know, the purpose is, are not to pull, it's to conserve resources, reduce the waste that we generate in construction, of course, to increase energy efficiency, and very importantly, to promote health and productivity of building occupants by making sure that buildings are designed in a sustainable and healthy way. They look at five categories when scoring construction, new construction, and that is if the site to build on is sustainable, water efficiency, energy and atmosphere, materials and resources, as well as the indoor environmental quality, so mostly indoor air quality is part of that. When thinking about, you know, what level we would want to consider here in Athens, I looked to the state of Ohio and something that they've implemented for school facilities, new school facilities in Ohio, and this was done a few years ago in 2007. And they require all new K through 12 schools to meet lead silver requirement, which is the third one down, there's, I believe, gold, platinum, and silver. Thank you. So that's what I'm considering as a possibility here, and I will have, have some sort of draft in the coming weeks, and then we'll have a discussion once they have a draft there. If anyone has feedback, please get it to me, or ideas, or constructive criticism, of course, as well. And I'm happy to discuss here.
A question, I just learned this week that there are also lead standards for remodeling existing buildings. Is that something we want to consider with this, or does that complicate it?
We did discuss this last time, and I, that is something that I would like to put in there as well. And only if it's, of course, only if it's a renovation over a certain percentage of the property value, which is often 50% cut off. So that's what's considered substantial, substantial renovation. So anyway, I did just want to reintroduce that, we discussed it very briefly last year, and then with the holidays and everything, it sort of fell behind, so we'll have more discussion on that in the coming weeks. Anything miscellaneous that anyone has for environment? Okay, great. We'll move to the next committee meeting, which is city services.
And I'm going to pass in front of the chair.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, I just wanted to mention that during our last safety committee meeting, a member, Nicely, had requested from Chief Tronxel a list of, I think, four-story buildings in Athens, which Chief Tronxel has provided, and there were 112 buildings on the list. It turned out that approximately 85% of them are university buildings, so.
Did you stick safety services?
Yes, safety services.
Did safety services. Do you have a map of?
I do. I put it in, but I'll stay right here. This is, I'll show you camera.
Yes, right there. Those, you may make it see them.
This is just a quick, planner Paul, of buildings that were identified as requiring the ladder truck. Yes, there is quite a concentration around the high university. Some other things we wanted you to note, he did an inset here of the state, an inset here of what was used for formerly known as Grand Vista, now called Reserve at the Falls. You can see, there's a lot of red, and we do not believe this is all encompassing, there's actually more to come. So we have that.
Very grand, tell them thanks.
Want to share, pass it along to them?
Sure, we could also. I've been watching a few times this week. It's a good idea, share on some people.
Thank you.
So that was one item that you asked us to name.
I had a quick question. New, new buildings like the Reserve, the Falls, or whatever it is, is sprinkled, isn't it? Okay. That would be interesting to see which ones, when was it, we started, would be required for sprinkler?
The majority of the building you're going to look at on footprint are not sprinkled. The majority of the old buildings are not sprinkled, especially the residential halls. I'm trying to determine our motion. Critical.
Chief Tronxel, I have a question. You know, we keep talking about sprinkled buildings, but it was my understanding that the sprinkling was mainly to give people time to get out of the buildings, that it, we really can't depend on the sprinkling system to save the buildings from burning. Could you clarify that a little bit, maybe?
Well, hey, thank you. You look at the data that's provided by the National Fire Protection Association, that majority of fires and sprinkled buildings, one head controls that fire. And simply, what that means is, a head that puts out approximately 25 gallon per minute will control that fire. What it doesn't tell you is the smoke that's generated before that fire is out, how far that expands, either horizontally or vertically. That's the issue we get into from a rescue perspective. So yes, 90, probably 90-plus percent effective with one head, doesn't take into consideration the toxic gases. And yet, you know, what we look at is, and I guess our biggest concern has always been a dormitory fire. You know, a fire that houses 160, 200 individuals in an unsprinkled area presents a rescue scenario that it's certainly difficult at best, and certainly attacks our resources from a wider perspective.
Thank you. Paul, did you want to go ahead with your report? I know you had a meeting.
Good, good.
Okay.
I would not say it's a very formal report, but we did meet with the second representative based on the model that's been selected by a committee that's been working, I mean, it's two years, getting the specifications down. Some good news would be that it's a little less than the $1,058, it's coming in a little now like $1,030,000. We have a number of options. I will state, I want to state a few things, that many of the newest emission standards would be, are included in our truck in terms of the quote that we have and the safety measures. In addition, we come with quite the warranties that are very comfortable, five years, 100,000 miles, you know, and all sorts of pieces, a bumper-to-bumper seven-year warranty. So we're going to get a very good truck. The bottom-line conception is, we really don't have to put a penny down, but we have to enter into a contract. You do have to provide a purchase order two months from, prior to the date of delivery. They're talking about a nine-month build-out for this vehicle. Meeting with the auditors, the discussions where, even though we have secured and reserved that capital of funding for this purchase because of the possibility of having some cash flow issues, you know, we, you know, maybe put $300,000 down at this time, and then, you know, work out the payments that will become due. She's received an extremely favorable interest rate from a local bank, extremely favorable.
I saw that.
You did see that?
I did.
We've also received news today that there are two different ways to deal with the existing truck. They accept it as a trade-in at $30,000, that's a guaranteed $30,000 that comes off and, you know, essentially back to us or off the price of that. Or we can attempt to sell it as is, and there may be a potential buyer out there to purchase it about $60,000 for a small village in the state of Ohio. Anything else you want to add to that?
No, I don't think so for the financing part of it. I know, I'm sure you had sent me an email today with several questions on it, I.
I did, there was Mr. Gauz's name, and I, I have the list, or did you want to go ahead and ask yourself?
You can look through the list, or I can just ask a couple. You know, one is, would a shorter ladder that's less expensive be just as, provide just as much protection in a city like ours?
Not if you wanted to rescue people from buildings.
From, I mean, 75, so it's a drive, drive down the east green, four-story buildings,
beautiful trees, God love trees. We can't access it with a short ladder. Now, we could change all the trees down, but that's going to take some time to do that. So the answer to your question is, we have a 90-foot now, and we have issues with a 90-foot tower trying to get into these areas. I've discussed it.
That question's answered for me.
I've discussed it with the university officials, and asked them to please in the future, when they plant trees, to try to plant trees that in 20 years don't block our access. They can still plant trees, they can still look nice, but, you know, try to, and I think the planners have looked at that, and I think what they're saying now is, they have listened to us to some degree, and they're trying to deal with trees that are less sprawling.
Better location, hopefully.
I mean, seriously, if you just drive down east green and look how it is configured, I think you'll get a good grasp of the situation that we have to deal with, that it's simply not a vertical reach. You know, a lot of times, our ladder might be at a 45-degree angle, extending out to get over to this building, just to get around the wires, trees, and things like that, so. Yeah, the 100-foot is, unfortunately, is wide in a city because, you know, we're a, you know, we're a small city, but, and I told somebody a while back, that when I apply for grants, we have all the characteristics of an urban environment. Consequently, that helps in securing grants at times, but it's somewhat challenging for us to deal with that environment, especially when we have a lot of older buildings. You know, we talked about the last meeting about the Court Street fires that we had back in the 80s that were devastating to Court Street. We've been very fortunate, we're going to have those since 86.
Can we get super ladder truck action on Halloween?
Yes, you do.
And then I had another question that you had asked was, you know, Southern Lakes, an SPS 100 and an SP 100, and a, the S2S 100 is a shorter truck. And obviously, shorter trucks are more maneuverable, and if you try to get vehicles around this town, maneuverability is really a key for us. And if the SP is actually two foot longer than one we have now, and a foot longer than wheelbase, so consequently, what we get is certainly a reduced turning radius. Reduced turning radius means a much more difficult time in getting into these tighter areas. And anybody that's driven around the university or some of the areas on college, it's difficult. So the SPS basically gives us a two-foot shorter wheelbase, the truck overall is shorter, and how they do that is to have a four-section ladder, they've engineered an 5-section ladder, which is reduced.
No, I think the other question I had was, if there are any grant funds that are potentially available this year?
I've applied the last two or three years, and there's, I think probably everybody's aware that grants now are, number one, are drying up, they're certainly reduced in the amounts that we were being given five years ago. Consequently, the competition for those grants are much more difficult. And I think the more reluctant to give out large, large grants, consequently, we haven't gotten, I mean, we haven't gotten looked at, so. But if you look at that from the other side, when I apply for other grants, we've been looked at very fratably because it seems like year after year, I'm coming to council and asking for matching a 10% match for capital dollars. And so I think the narratives that we're using are good. Unfortunately, it's just, it's just very difficult.
It's uncomfortable for these larger workers.
Yes, we have, and we have not been successful.
I would think your question started one that you submitted and sent it, right? So we haven't heard from that, we wouldn't hear from that at all. And you don't have, I would say.
No, there we have it. I've gotten a, I've gotten a letter back or an email back. I've gotten a, I've gotten a letter back, or an email back, asking for additional information for the one grant that I'd submitted. And generally, when you get that, that's a positive, and you're probably gonna get selected for that grant. Unfortunately, that's for over here, and not the ladder.
Not the ladder.
Or the safer grant, either one of those grants, we've not heard back from. So, I don't think, whether or not, by now, I doubt very seriously if we're gonna be considered for it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. You had another question?
On the 70,000 pound rating? Yes, I did bring your list.
I did not.
And that was one of the questions, I believe I know the answer to that, but if you'd like to answer that, Chief Troxel.
Well, if you remember when you approved the engineering, and the design, and ultimately the construction of the headquarters project, the third project, I believe it was.
The most recent?
The most recent, yeah. The engineers basically designed that to support 70,000 pounds per bay, once it was constructed. So, the answer to your question is, each bay is at 70,000 pounds. The positive from that is that if we had a door break, or something like that, we can move the ladder truck to another bay without jeopardizing the integrity of the structure. So, that's why it was designed in that manner. To have designed it to a higher rating would have been extremely expensive, according to the engineers. So, it is now constructed at 70,000 pounds, according to the engineer.
We have it in writing.
There it is.
And actually, it's a little, as you said, maneuverability, but also, it's a little less rentier on our streets.
So, yeah, I mean, ladder trucks, and this was an issue when we bought the first ladder truck, we have now. Many of the trucks that we looked at could not meet the federal load, axle load requirements. Those are still issues, and I think we'd be remiss if we even considered trucks that were overweight. Yes, they may get an exemption, but God help you, in case you run over somebody because your brakes fail, and you're over federal axle laws. So, I mean, you know, we researched this pretty extensively, and I think the captain and the firefighters did an excellent job, I just sort of stayed out of the way, and let them do this, and then when I got the finished product done, I reviewed it, and it looked pretty consistent on the information that I had, so. Certainly, I'm returning, you have a question?
There was one more.
But enough, this is put out to date enough, it sounds like, I was gonna ask that, because it sounds like you've met with them to discuss price and.
Your state term, and that's essentially, the state has done the bidding for us, and that's when the state locked in price.
We're actually so lucky on this. Whereas, we're looking at the state term and state bid at the end of the bid, so consequently, any price increases that have occurred through this term, we're not gonna realize. Had, you know, had we did this at the beginning of the term, then we probably wouldn't be as fortunate. I mean, we could be seeing a $50,000 savings, just because we're at the end of the term, and they have not increased it, so we're fortunate at that. And I think, Harry, the price that he'd given Kathy and you, I think he locked it in for 60 days, even if the state term doesn't increase.
And I, yeah, I found a bid last night for another state, and it was a 2011 bid, and it was substantially higher.
He talked about that, he said it's different state to state, and we're lucky, actually, here in Ohio, so.
It's a symbol in Ohio, too, so it's nice. You talked a little bit about them.
Well, actually, it's built in Marysville, or, I'm sorry, not Marysville, but Marysville exit right in Columbus. So, that was always nice, because this is a very sophisticated and complicated piece of equipment. If something happens, it happens. It's nice to be able to get in the truck, and drive 65 miles, and pick up, pick up a part that we might need, versus having one shipped from Wisconsin, or wherever, and there is. And I can tell you a story, right after we got the truck we have now, it was on Labor Day, and we'd just gotten, and the guys were out driving around, around the alley lane, and the steering cylinder blew. You can't move the truck on Labor Day. They call me, I come in, and we're sitting there, you can't tow it. So, we're sitting there, we're, I don't know, $10,000 monitor the equipment. So, I go off, and I call up the salesman himself, and I said, "We got a problem." And within two hours, the mechanic was here, working on the cylinder, had replaced, and in three hours, we had the truck back to station. That is important, I mean, that is, you know, something critical, that you don't get very often, and I think that told me a lot right then, because that was really the first dealings I had had with that company, that it told me a lot about the company, and how they stand behind the products, so.
And without any backup vehicle nearby, it's important you have that.
Exactly. All about him, there wasn't any backup. That was it, that's all, that's what you had. Is there any other things that I can?
Any other questions?
No, I had a question for Paula. Did you say earlier that if we really had with this, we don't need to put a down payment?
No, but every dollar we put down, or, you know, chunk of dollars, as it were, can result in a savings at the end. We just need to determine that. We have a few different scenarios, I probably want to discuss a little bit more with the auditor before presenting, but we will have that in place. You have to, we'd have to secure our financing at least two months in advance of delivery of the vehicle.
Yeah. And it's about nine months.
Once we sign off on that, within, hopefully, the next 60 days, so that we can have that locked-in price, right now is our goal. And I do have one miscellaneous under your, if you could stay.
Okay.
Your SBCA grant. Turn it on.
No, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You have another grant that you said you needed council authorization, incorporation?
Right. We had, we had applied for a small grant, we'd just gotten the turnout gear grant, if you remember, this past year, in fact, we just received a turnout gear, and it was for about $54,000. I'd applied for a, another grant, was basically for a smart board, projector, and far-fetched software, it was about $11,000 grant. Well, that, that grant was the notification I'd gotten last week about the additional questions, if you're awarded this grant, will you accept it? And they have this question, basically, send it to you if you're in line for it. So, as in the past, when we're gonna get closer to these grants, and it's favorable, council has passed an ordinance for the $11,000, and our part of that is 10%, so the, basically, our out-of-pocket expense would be $1,100. So, at some point, we will, we will need, if you think that's a good deal, we will need to move forward on an ordinance to.
Appreciate it.
Secure it.
And I'll get you a copy of that grant application.
Okay, great.
I just wanted to miss the opportunity, since we're in committee.
Any other questions or comments?
One more miscellaneous, just a little off, it's on the topic of safety services, there's been discussion about trying to add more defibrillators, automatic defibrillators within the city hall. We have one downstairs, you know, this is the jump start in his heart.
Right.
I know Assistant Service Safety Director is doing an inventory, and see how they're checking out, because of the batteries, et cetera, et cetera, but, you know, we are trying to do this, not run up on the third floor, and it's not run up on the second floor of city hall, so we'll probably look around for grants and see if we can get some kind of money for that.
How much do those cost? How much do those cost?
Twenty-two, I think the last one we bought was around $2,200, so.
Yeah.
Is that something in the court they don't have?
You have to run downstairs and mayor's office.
Probably have a key to get in.
Is that something that public, like, with the court, you know, that there's some type of cost sharing?
Well, I'm gonna look around, see if we can find some grants. It's not, it's, again, just, really, if you start looking, we still have gaps, we have them in almost all our buildings. Question is, you know, it can hurt down in different floors, and make sure everybody's aware of where they are. I mean, that's it, I know where ours is in the office there, but I don't think anybody from the court could find it easily. I mean, we tell them, but how often do you look for these things? And they're not something you wanna use every day, anyway, right?
I mean, they have the most traffic.
And do folks know how to use them?
Yes, it's the other night, you turn it on, tells you what to do.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, just to echo what the mayor's saying, either unfortunately or fortunately, if you use one of those, over two or three months ago, at a road re-meeting, and a gentleman collapsed and was pulseless for a period of time, and fortunately, we had an AED on my truck, and I grabbed it, and Dr. Kevin Young, luckily, there also, so it made, the outcome was very positive, but it is, just brings home the point that it can happen anytime. And I've certainly, over the years of working in this business, had the opportunity or miss opportunity, to be around situations several times, and certainly, the AEDs are your first line of defense of successful treatment of pre-hospital cardiac arrest. And also, that we do have some defibrillators in the city that are the old software, so some of those need to be recycled out, because they can't be upgraded. The Red Cross, I think, may have some grants available.
Chief Troxel, thank you so much for coming tonight and answering our questions.
Sure. You have any other questions, email me, I'll answer for you.
Great. Okay. Any other miscellaneous? All right, can anyone give that?
My miscellaneous is so miscellaneous that it didn't come up, so I'm passing it on to Transportation Committee, so. It's not ready to come forward yet. I'm waiting.
Thank you. We have one other transportation item to briefly discuss tonight, and this is for the engineering, for the carriage bridge, as was mentioned earlier. And to secure the carriage bridge, what we have now is an opportunity to use the Jones Stuckey firm, that is looking at the Oxbow Bridge, should also help us with engineering the carriage hill, and that's a recommendation of the Public Works Director, and we do that. And it meets with our approval. I'm sorry, I didn't have the microphone back over. This is for the carriage hill bridge, so I'll briefly repeat again for the audience and television viewers. The carriage hill bridge is a bridge that we are planning to repair in 2011, it needs some engineering work, we would be planning to use the Jones Stuckey firm, that's a recommendation of the Public Works Director, this is the firm that's working with us on the Oxbow Bridge, and his request is for $20,000 for the design, for the engineering and design of the carriage hill. And what we would be doing is replacing the deck and the beams, and using prefabricated materials for this, and what this will do, by using prefabricated materials, we'll be able to do the repair quickly, since that is, that bridge is the only entrance and access avenue, it needs, that repairs need to be completed in one night, and that can be done. Any questions about that, or any comments?
I have one that's not related to the, somewhat related, but more for, Sheriff's Safety Director, perhaps, because there is only one entrance or exit to this place that has several hundred beds, I'm sure, what would be the possibility of connecting it to?
It'd be difficult, we discussed that at staff meeting, actually, and part of the argument, part of the discussion is actually parking a bumper truck up there for duration? I think that's where we were.
We'll have emergency vehicles there, I mean, but it is going to be an interesting night, and they tend to take it out and bring it in and replace it all with that.
And one day. Yeah, this was at staff meeting as well, the logistics are trying to do that as fast as possible.
We'll let you know, there'll be public releases on that, if you're interested.
Well, I'll be honest, it's pretty bad if they can spend the night at the hotel, or something.
Worst case, you can transport them over the summit side, I mean, the only thing is you couldn't drive something across to the summit, there's too much of a hill there. I don't know if you've walked up it or something, but there's a good 20-foot drop, maybe?
Yes, they built quite the path.
So, we'd be limited by what you could do, I mean, you could probably haul somebody over the hill, but not a, a, a ladder truck, we wouldn't know about it, or anything else.
Yes, Councilman.
Great solution, two words, zip line, right down the hill.
Not only is somebody from the recreation department thinking, you'd think that, sure.
It'd be a really interesting evening. I have one other miscellaneous item, were there any other comments about carriage hill? Okay. One of the miscellaneous items that I will mention now, that we will be bringing up in the next month or so, is our annual proposal to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the bus transit system. That's an annual application that we submit, and so that'll be coming up. We passed it in April of last year, so we will be beginning the legislation in the next month or so.
And I think we've also got information that the buses, the late front buses, that are inter-city transit buses, are coming up soon, in the next couple of weeks. Ready to be delivered.
Good.
That should be interesting.
They still need wrapped, you know, that's something.
Any other?
And our paper, where the Martinis are hanging, that was the other report.
What a great. Any other miscellaneous transportation items? No, hearing none? That's the end of the Transportation Committee.
We're done?
End of the meeting.